Josh, my question is though, of all of these signatures, I've got like eight different things. How many documents have to be notarized?
One contract, that's the CDBG one, but we need to make sure that there's two original copies.
Only one notary. All of this stuff has to be notarized?
Why, just that one contract?
One contract, made a copy of, signed to, so you're signing two distinct contracts. CDBG one and CDBG two, which are the same contract.
Right.
Original signatures on both.
Right, exactly.
Elder Affairs one?
No notary on that one.
Oh, okay, that one, okay, that one looked like-
It's on your agenda for, to review and approve accordingly, so.
There's so many things to sign, it's like buying a house.
I don't leave, I have chapter ninety that needs to be signed too, but we can take care of that later.
So CDBG, and it's a, between-
Us and-
Town-
And Mass-
And-
D C-
Department of Housing.
D H C D.
Department of Housing.
D H C D.
C D.
Delta Hotel Charlie Delta.
Document date.
Date, today.
That's not the date on the document, though. Here we go. We're gonna give it today's date, because I can't find any other information on there. Okay, you are signing this under your free report. I am.
Right.
All right, I think, is that all I have to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's see. Acknowledgement, date notarized, I'll do that, once I notarize it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, meeting is open, six oh two, we are being recorded and we're live. I'm just trying to read the board, I have one in the contact works, one dozen. Um, first up, we have, we're gonna table, motion to table, meeting examination of meeting minutes for the twenty-fifth until next week, is there a second?
Aye.
Or whenever our next time is.
Second.
On favor, I, um, I make a motion to accept the executive session meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth as written.
Uh, second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll just sign those, Joanne, whenever you have them, but they're accepted, because we had a digital copy. Um, TJ, you got audience participation for us, friends?
Oh.
Anyone online? No? Um, we have action items, so first up, we have a contract between the town and the Mass Department of Housing Community Development for the community development block grant for a total of four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and eight hun- four hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Can I second that?
I will second.
Okay, for discussion, Josh, just to clarify, this is that, uh, block grant that we talked about almost a year ago, is that right? For, it's the, so that, uh, targeted, I'm gonna say targeted groups, I think we were thinking about seniors and folks that were financially limited could execute improvements potentially to their homes and have that as a grant against their property taxes paid over a ten to fifteen year period, is that correct? Something like that?
It's a housing rehabilitation program for income qualified residents. Um, and yeah, I think, actually, I got the poster behind me, it's a deferred payment loan for up to forty thousand per household. Um, there's a period of time of which, you know, if the resident lives in the home, the loan is forgiven. And that's just to kind of refrain from, you know, anybody, you know, capitalizing on taxpayer resources by fixing something and then later leaving and capitalizing on the equity, you know what I mean?
I'm gonna try and paraphrase this, as I recall it, is, for example, if a home is loaned forty thousand dollars out of this community block-
Up to forty thousand, yeah.
Right.
Depending on the issue.
And that is placed across as a lien against their property taxes for X number of years. They don't actually pay it back, it just is a deferred grant. However, if they sell their home within that period, they're responsible for paying back the portion.
Right. Right. And that's one component of it, component of Eric, the grant's also gonna pay to develop and draft an ADA compliance transition plan on all our public buildings.
So when do you think this will be available to residents, Josh?
That's a great question, right now, there's a couple of things happening, you know, the state, what they're trying to do is coordinate the contractual things, what they're waiting for, they're still waiting for this con- to settle the contract between the state and the federal government.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, they've been, you know, they were hoping to at least kind of, you know, get through the contractual administrative stuff between the state and the towns, as well as any participating vendors. So I don't have an answer to that yet, um, but right now, what we're trying to do is get the program, you know, the logistics of it up and running, so that we're ready for execution, uh, once everything's settled.
I think there was a, there was also a community blight portion of this. Is that right, Josh?
So let's say it again, I didn't hear that.
I recall, I thought we talked that there's also a component of this that allows for the town to utilize the funds to address community blight, right, so if there was a, uh, for example, an abandoned property in the middle of town, the roof's falling in and nobody, it would allow us to use some of these funds to just turn the property to green space.
I remember when Chris Dunphy was in front of the body here, that conversation happening, I don't know the logistics of it, um, but from what I recall, I think you're right, um, it's a little bit more trickier.
Yeah.
Um, but not impossible.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Josh, and PBPC does all of the, like, marketing and everything for us, to help us get the word out to people and applications and all that stuff?
Right.
Okay, perfect. Awesome, all right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When you, when you sign the contract, Kara, remember, there's double, those pages that you're signing, there's double those pages, so the first page and the second page, you'll sign that. Everywhere where there's stickies is where you're gonna put original link.
There's a lot of stickies.
You're getting more than a grade book right now.
All right, uh, I'm gonna put your email, because I don't wanna put mine.
Hey, Josh. The administrator, it's my question.
Thank you. Go ahead, TJ.
Yeah, is there, is there a, uh, like, a maximum or minimum on, on this block grant, like, uh, an income level, where do you qualify, or you're overqualified, or?
Yep, so there is an income guideline, um, made available through the federal and state government, of which, you know, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, through their staff, you know, you put in an application saying that you need a new septic, for example, then you'll have a caseworker that'll connect with you and assess your household income. And if you qualify, um, you know, then great. So that, yeah, that, there is an income level based on, um, how it's defined by statute. Is that what, what your question was, TJ?
TJ, we had the same question when we were getting the presentation, and the answer, I recall, from the representative was twofold, there is a, uh, income component, and then there was also, uh, let's say, people over a certain age were, like, included in the class that they believed the exception already existed, so they didn't check. If that makes, makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, you're going after fixed income.
Yeah, is, is there like a matching thing, like, uh, say the home owner is at a certain level of, uh-
Yeah.
Can you hit that D?
I guess it's just happening.
You know, does the loan include, well, our rental loan, you're twenty, you gotta put up-
Well, right, you're not, you're not taking it like you're taking it away.
It's, it's a, it's a deferred loan, so what happens is the amount of the loan gets placed on your property taxes on the scale of like a standard payback per year. So, if, if it was just a ten-year loan for a thousand dollars a year, every year you live in the house, a thousand dollars of that is forgiven. It just disappears, you're not actually paying it, it's just, it just disappears.
Okay.
And then, but if you sold the house two years after you did it, you would owe eight thousand back to the community block grant, because you didn't live-
So you say eight, yes.
That's why you're a good watch for it.
We do gotta give a shout out to DJ, TJ, and also thanking him as the PBPC representative for the Town of Landford on the PBC Board of Directors. So, thanks TJ for your help and support through this.
Thanks TJ.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You're not so bad.
Fire, that's what it is.
I guess we'll keep you around. Um, all right, so, thank you guys, um, we're gonna move on to the action item B, which is the temporary COVID-nineteen leave policy. So we had some questions for council, which were sent out for the, um, before we adopted the leave policy. Do you remember last week?
What leave policy?
The temporary COVID-nineteen leave policy.
I didn't approve that.
No, we didn't approve it, because we had questions for council.
Oh, okay.
So, um-
Holy cow, we didn't watch.
What happened? Um, so you should have a copy in front of you of, um, their-
Is that response in email?
Responses.
Services counter, services counter, turnpike facility.
You got it? All right, so- This is a little grainy, too. So, the first, yes, thank you very much. So the first comment, um, from the attorneys is that one issue the town has to decide is whether an employee is entitled to the original eighty hours of sick leave, provided by, I can't read that word, the F?
The F M L A, which stands for-
No, it's like F, it's like FF-CRA.
Yeah, that's the, the COVID relief, uh, the Family First COVID Relief Act.
Which is no longer-
Or if they are entitled to a new allotment of paid leave beginning January first, point one. I E, a new eighty hours following the expiration of the COVID relief.
Okay.
So that's one thing that we have to decide on.
So the answer to that question is because, uh, so when I worked for Wells Fargo, on January first, Wells Fargo deposited all leave and earnings into somebody's account, leave into somebody's account, that's what you refresh it.
Yeah.
If the FFCA expired on December thirty-first, but on January first, I got two hundred hours of vacation and personal time deposited in my account, the question is, does this stress that you can use the eighty hours first, or do you have to use it in your account? Because it's just been deposited, you have a fresh bank.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what that is.
Okay.
So it doesn't really apply to us, because our bank starts on July first every year.
Okay. All right, so the next one up says, the town might consider what's specifically entitled an employee to leave under this policy, positive test, feeling symptomatic, et cetera, and what documentation is required. Um, I think that you have to take into consideration that someone even taking a test has to quarantine technically until test results come in. Or someone that's exposed, so someone that's exposed has to then take the test and then quarantine until the results are in. And then further quarantine.
Three days.
And then further quarantine if they're positive.
Right.
So, I would say, I don't know if I would go with feeling symptomatic, but I would go with more taking it, has, you know, ta- taken a test.
Test results come in, you're positive, you're, um-
The date that they take the test.
Right.
Because they have to quarantine at that point, because they're not sure if it's negative or positive. Right, hello? So the day that they go down to take the test should be when they, uh, when this starts, does that make sense? Or do you think it should be with feeling symptomatic?
I think it should start when they exhaust, if you're gonna start something, what are you trying to start?
No, I mean, so if you read in the, uh, employees are entitled to COVID-nineteen quarantine sick leave when the employee is unable to work because the employee is isolating or self-quarantining due to, and this is where it starts to list.
This is gonna be the tougher discussion, uh, I'm against. With only you and I here, unless you're against it, we just end it, we're done.
You're against the whole policy?
I'm against the whole policy.
Oh.
So, if I'm against the whole policy, we're not gonna reach a decision.
No, okay, so we wanna wait on Tom, then? We can, we can table and we tell the stream, that makes perfect sense.
I'm just, I'm of the-
I have no idea what Tom-
We're asked to extend the provisions.
Right.
Voluntarily, and the provisions voluntarily are for twelve weeks of paid time off. The first eighty hours, two weeks, are paid at the full totes. And the next weeks are paid at two-thirds total. And neither of those provisions of us giving employees twelve weeks of EFMLA paid time off or the number of employees that we had in town are anywhere encumbered in our budget. So if we want to offer this, I would put it as an amendment in the special town meeting and let the town vote as to whether they wanna commit the funds to something that could be that owners.
By that time, who knows where this will all be. This is to address, you know, any particular employee, and we do have one employee who's, who, you know, was tested positive and had to quarantine, um, this policy, what it does is, that act, that we can, uh, extend it for a portion of the time, whatever you guys decide to have an end date with the policy, that they use, not, and it's gotta be COVID-specific, so if it's, you know, because they're asymptomatic, or because they've tested positive, um, that they get those eighty hours, that they don't have to touch their own time, that this time is available from the town that they can tap into without the need of having to tap into their own accrued time or sick time. Um, so in that decision right now, is, stands with the board, if whether, because the, the act expired, but there is a provision law that allows communities to extend within the borders of your community for the period of time of which you decide. Um-
Unlike, may I?
Go ahead, yeah.
But the decision factor is, if I'm a business and I enact this, I'd get tax credits for doing that, right, so it's, it's empathy, how women say it, if I'm a business and extend that, I'm gonna get a tax credit for the amount of money that I've given someone to be off, sick. As town council has said, towns don't get that, all you're doing is paying out money for a person that is not working. And I get it, I understand that's sick, but if a person has twenty-one days of vacation, or seventeen days of vacation, whatever we have on the books for our employees, you know, that's three weeks of time off. You use your time off because crap happens, right? FMLA, or extended FMLA, comes into play when you run out of vacation.
So I guess, I feel like the difference here is, if I'm using my, on a normal, in a normal situation, if I'm sick and I'm using sick time, I'm taking a sick, you know, I'm sick, I've got, I'll take two days off because I'm sick, right? But we're telling people here, state mandated, you're quarantining for fourteen days. So you therefore are forced to take the fourteen days off.
Take ten days of time off.
So you may feel fine after two days, but you have to take those ten days off. So I guess I feel like that's where there's that difference, where for me, I don't feel a hundred percent comfortable with asking them to take their sick time because it's not, it's just, I feel like it's a different-
I understand employees that we're talking about, it's not sick time, they just have twenty-one days off, up to twenty-one days off.
But it's still their time, I mean, this is, I feel like this is sort of unprecedented situation.
That's-
And, if you do it for one employee, you do it for all, if you do it for all, there's potential for the town to encumber-
I see, I understand that, I do understand that.
It's, it's the, it's potential for the town to encumber twelve weeks of paid time off per employee that's on the boards. And in return, receive those services for that.
So maybe we need to-
And that's a very significant decision.
So then, I, I don't disagree with the idea to go to the town with an amount that has to be moved to a line item for, specifically to use for this, um, policy.
And you can certainly, if they're concerned about, uh, uh, one or two individuals in the town, which, uh, it's there, we can certainly apply benefits retro actively.
But the, by the time we go to town floor, this might be irrelevant, um, we're talking about, what, another month or two months?
Yeah.
On the twenty-second.
Yeah, but we already signed that warrant, we can't.
Add another one?
We can't.
Got fourteen days, fifteen and twelve, or we out of time?
We're out of time.
Okay.
Um, I guess, I don't know if I'm comfortable making a decision tonight, I mean, we're not gonna make a decision anyways, because we're just gonna tie and vote, so let's, can we table this for our next meeting, to discuss when Tom is here?
If we could just get a motion on that table and we can record a part.
Motion to table the, um, action item B. Oh, gosh. Yes.
Sorry, Kara, Kara.
That's okay, it's, she, um, Joanne was just saying it's not gonna be till March eighth.
Or we can talk about it briefly, for a special town.
That's true.
I, we, I was hoping we can schedule a meeting sometime next week, I know Monday's a holiday, but, um, our building group is reviewing the proposals, I was gonna bring up on our other business, and they'll be coming forward to you with a recommendation, so that we can start negotiating the dollar amount and be prepared for a special town meeting, um, for the OPM project.
Okay.
We can have it ready for Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever day you pick next week, to have your select board meeting.
Okay, so we'll just table this until our next meeting, and then whatever we decide. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, um, next we've got, review and take action on a contract between the town and the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to receive a six thousand dollar grant for services offered at the Council on Aging Department. So we have-
There's two copies there, Margaret wanted me to make sure you sign both, but you do this every year. Elderly Affairs make available a certain dollar amount to COAs across the Commonwealth, and our, um, portion per formula is six thousand dollars, um, this is the contract, you know, annually, we gotta get into these contracts, so that's what's in front of you.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion as such, can I say that, as such, and you know, I'm sorry, repeat it all over again. Um, second for discussion?
Second for discussion. I have no idea where that document is in my file.
It's just one of these fancy guys.
Yeah, Commonwealth of Massachusetts standard contract form, and it's, there's two copies, those are the same, just, if you can sign it both, if you approve, that'd be great.
I have to put it in telescopic mode.
Yeah, it's a doozy. Um, I don't really have any questions on this, I know we do it every year.
Oh, yeah, is this the, okay.
Um, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Make sure you sign both.
I got it, I got it.
So, whither?
Select board chair. Oh, I gotta tell you guys my chicken story after, it's very exciting. All right, um, next, we got, review and take action on contract between town and UMass Boston Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management, to provide the town professional services in the development of a comprehensive five-year capital improvement plan.
Yep.
Motion as such. That's a second from-
Yep.
Kara. Kara, original for signature, okay, so-
This is already funded, so it's just us agreeing to-
It's just agreeing to take the money.
Yep, take the money.
Have to take the money, um, this one is our contract between the town and the vendor that would provide the technical assistance and professional services to help draft the CIP, the Community Improvement Plan.
Okay, so, this one is not taking money, this is paying money.
Last select board meeting, you voted to approve the contract between the town and the Commonwealth to take the money, yeah. This is the contract between the town and UMass Boston Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management.
Okay. All right, um, I think both of us, Eric, are signing these. And Josh is gonna tell me, you're gonna have two copies to sign.
No, you don't, you don't need two copies on that, but just make sure you sign it.
I don't know what this means.
Where?
No, I figured it out.
Because we do have two contracts, but they're distinctly different, one's for twenty K, one's for fifty K.
All right, I'm sending you this, so, um, all in favor?
Of, number two?
The motion that we just made for D? Oh, I said as such.
He didn't make one for this.
Motion for- For as such, for the new one. For D.
So as such means to, and to approve the contract, right, between the town and the vendor, I'm assuming?
Yeah, this is review and take action, so to approve the contract between town, UMass Boston Edward Collins Junior, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a second? Josh, you gonna be all right?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, beautiful. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and just make this motion. Motion to approve the contract between the town and UMass Boston Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management to provide technical assistance with reviewing the town's classification and compensation system and provide the town with recommendations on classification and compensation. Is there a second for discussion?
Second. Discussion, sign, come.
All right, so this is also the eighth day of February. Okay, so-
UMass awarded us thirty-five thousand dollars, twenty of it goes for capital planning, and fifteen goes for this.
Yeah, so this is the fifteen thousand. Five thousand for questionnaires, five thousand when the draft descriptions are submitted, five thousand when the final draft is submitted. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and this is the eighth day of February. Okay, that's for you to sign. Next up, review and take action on appointment certificate to town clerk for new police chief.
Can I ask a question about that, please?
Yes, please do.
Paul Farquhar was questioning me for whether that was necessary, and I thought that you guys did this routinely for the end, he's lovely, he was in a three-year contract, you just reappointed him on his anniversary of the year, et cetera.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah, we usually, I mean, we usually-
Because it's an employment contract, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so he'll be, um, he'll be reappointed in June, so I'll have another one, and this is-
Perfect.
And the clerk's office already swore to him, like, last week.
So I would make an emotion, a motion to appoint Tammy, how do I say Tammy's last name?
We just.
Thank you, um, to the position of police chief. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just rolling through these guys, all right, um, so then there's a review and take act- Just rolling through these guys. Alright, um, so then there's a review and take action, so motion to approve a security lighting form to request ever source to install lighting on a lamp post located in the intersection of Cobble Mountain Road and Warren Oak Road in front of thirty-two Warren Oak. Is there a second for discussion? So if you second it, I'll tell you more about it.
Okay, second.
Okay, so um, this um resident has requested uh lighting on a pole that's already in place and the research shows that it's no cost to install and it's like nine dollars and a year additional to our electric bill.
What's the purpose of why?
The, the concern is when you're traveling down Cobble Mountain Road to Route, oh god, twenty-three, right, Main Road? Um, you have that, you know, you can bear left or bear right, and there's a triangle in the middle.
Yep.
Uh, it's very dark and folks who might be uh visiting somebody on, on that road and, and, and maybe not used to there's a, a period where you're going down the road and you turn and then there's the triangle. Uh, and it's really dark in areas, you can't really see it as, as, as good and the resident there has uh brought up issues in the past where folks have, you know, gone right through that triangle area. Um, there is a lamp, uh, there is an electrical pole there and what we're trying to do is avoid any um, you know.
Yeah.
It's a public safety gate.
There's a public, that's the concern around public safety, sure.
Um, any discussion?
And Rainey agreed with it.
Is there anything to sign on that one?
Yeah, it says uh, where it says um, serv- geez, customer signature, sorry.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, oh, right here.
How much is this gonna cost the town?
Nine dollars a year.
Nine dollars?
No cost for install, no installation. A nice flag across the street.
Hey TJ, we get a, we, hey, we have a, a budget that we pay for our electrical um, streetlights. This will just be included in that.
Seventy-five cents a month.
Okay, so I would make a motion to go to revisit, so it's five unfinished business C, revisit electrical permit fee schedule. Is there a second?
Okay, second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor? Welcome, sorry.
Yeah, it's in their packets.
It's in our packets, alright, let me, oh yes, electrical inspector. Okay, so you're looking to revise our fee schedule, which I'm sure is much needed. Test that. Okay. Yep.
And Russell has weird uh Chester's. And Huntington is very comparable to.
Okay.
We like to be cost leaders. Yeah.
You mean you wanna be most expensive?
No, we wanna be least, we, we, we like to be cost leaders.
Don't let them scare you.
Seventy-five cents a month, baby, can you beat that?
Okay, so ours right now.
Fifty dollars for the initial.
Okay.
And, and then ten dollars of that is the administration fee.
Yep.
So it's basically forty dollars, I mean forty dollars for the first inspection, then forty dollars for the next, there that.
Okay.
And based on the amount of scope, the scope of work, based on the, the permanent application work, it's, it'd be an applied form.
Yep.
That's it. I mean, you, between swimming pool, solar systems and, and more, and some other sophisticated systems, it takes a fair amount of time to do those inspections. And then as the, as the inspector, as inspectors in Massachusetts, you probably do the, you have to, you have to maintain your license, your license.
Sorry.
Which means you have to take fifty dollars to continue with that, along with another six dollars continuing to get uh on top of that.
Yeah.
And then as a wiring inspector, you have to take another five hours on top of that, so it's like twenty-seven dollars. Continue with that, two easy classes, you just have to, so those, those costs for those classes would probably come out of pocket.
Sure, yeah.
Along with uh, the, at home administration work, as far as, you know, calling the ever source, after you tap the ever source, emailing them through their portal.
So you're looking to increase to um Chester's rates. Is that correct?
Yeah, Russell's are the same as Chester's.
So Russell, Chester, and Huntington's comparable. Okay, so then this is, it looks like i- if I'm reading this correctly, it says a hundred and seventy-five up to three infections per single family. How much of an increase is that from where we are now? Do we know?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to s- to see how much of an increase we're looking at.
For multi-home, or single family dwelling, so that's three inspections, so they can do a service inspection, a rough inspection. And a rough inspection is before they close the walls.
Sure.
So that would be. But it's, if you do it, if, just for a fee for work not specified, it's the general, it's seventy-five dollars. So basically, it's an increase of.
Thirty.
First initial, it would be an increase of twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Do we know when our electrical fees were last updated, Josh? You know?
Um, we, we didn't, um, I don't think they've never really been updated. I know we revisited this with the former electrical inspector and then we, yeah, we, we went back and forth and then ultimately just said, ah, just leave it alone.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you the fees haven't been updated since I moved to town, that was fourteen.
Since you got, I mean, I don't have any problem with matching Chester and, and Russell and Huntington, that makes sense to me, especially with us all using the same system. Um, what are your thoughts? I know Eric is gonna probably disagree with me, but.
Um, no, this has been a little bit better scheduled, to the last schedule I looked at, I was uh, someone asked me a question about Martha's been here and, and I looked at the schedules out there and it was just seventy-five dollars, busy. Couldn't have it seventy-five dollars. So, and they just had it lined out, not necessarily, where we'll say single family dwelling, it was basically the uh full permit first inspection was seventy-five dollars, every subsequent inspection was seventy-five dollars, so it didn't matter. I felt that had a little bit more opportunity for graft and corruption in it because somebody could say, oh, I need to come back, oh, I need to come back, oh, I need to come back. You're gonna give me seventy-five dollars a day every time I come back, right, so.
Yeah. Um, so I'm okay with approving these.
Um, I have a question about the calming on solar field, what's that mean?
Broken up, I mean, broken up this size of the solar system.
Yeah.
So anything over ten KW, between ten and, ten and fifteen KWs, which would only be up to ten.
And then after that, it was calming, it was calming gift.
Oh, that's, that's for the larger.
Yeah, the real, the real ones.
Yeah, well, what's that getting?
Cause basically, at, at that, at that point, you're doing it on a KW basis, and then they model the inspection provider. Cause like, like I can tell you, when I did the big one in Chester. When you did the big one in Chester, you didn't get the phase, so I had to, had to do all the other round first.
So.
It depends on how, how, or how, how they're gonna do it.
So this is my thought here, when it comes to, to the over, the over and under on new construction of solar. That, what was our last, Josh, you remember what the last building permit fee, what we received from a solar company was for? It was ungodly.
Ninety plus.
It was ninety plus thousand dollars.
But we.
For the, for, for the building permit. So, not that I'm diminishing the value of your services, but I'm thinking as a town for ninety thousand dollars, we could cover the inspection fee. Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, that was, that was actually the one I just.
We had a couple of them go in that the building, the actual building fee was uh, tens of thousands of dollars because they paid the, for the, for the, our zoning bylaws says they pay like two percent of the anticipated construction cost. And so they wrote a check for a hundred thousand dollars for a ten million dollar field or something like that, and I'm thinking a hundred thousand dollars can cover that. I don't care how many times you want, I think it can cover that. Um, I'm just, I'm just trying to say that I don't know that that's such a big thing to charge. If we could validate that a building permit and the value of the building permit that has been submitted to the town.
Are you trying to save the solar companies money? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, that's pretty stupid, isn't it?
I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from.
They have, but I, but I.
If they wrote a check, I mean, I don't.
Check for that, and our building inspector's gonna go out a couple times, but they're gonna rely on the electrical inspector, so we received this huge inspection fee that is. I'm concerned that, I'm concerned that businesses get the service for the fee that they subscribe as well.
If they are cutting a check.
For ninety thousand dollars.
And they're not balking at it, and this is, listen, and they're not balking at it, and this is, this is a small town fee. I'm sure that if they're building a large town, it would be larger, so I don't have a problem with it at all. We'll take your money. Thank you very much.
Remember that when we get to the one percent, three percent.
Yeah, well, this is a small, little family business, we're talking different, no, business is not business. You're talking Walmart versus the mom and pops.
I was trying to offer sanity, I'm getting out back out of that.
Yeah, jeez.
Anything that might benefit a business, I'll back off of.
Um, so I would, so you, you're looking for a motion to um match these fees?
So, let's do this. I make a motion.
Yeah.
To post these fees to the town webpage for two weeks for any input from the citizen.
No. There's no, there's no second.
With this, now with uh, building fees, uh, we did do that when we revisited the building fees.
We, we gave the opportunity for both the public to have voice and concern on our funding fees and our building fees. Did it change anything? Not significantly, right? But I would like the opportunity for the people in town to, to see that we are going to change the electrical rates and to share any comments with the town administrators, so we can bring it back. You won't have to come back because we'll just. My plan would be to approve it, but I just wanna have the town have the opportunity to do it.
I guess I'll second your motion.
Cleaner motion. Motion to approve pending two-week review by uh, for input from the town members via our website.
Second.
That's it. Two weeks henceforth, barring any input for citizens if it comes to law. Nope, I said motion to approve pending.
Listen, you better talk nicely to Joanne.
I'm, I'm paid a task board, nope. Yeah, but if you have a question, we'll send it to you, if not, it's not a big deal.
Not, which I doubt there will be.
No, it usually isn't. I mean, we had a question on uh, I think in our building permits, we had a question on barns, that was it, and so it's.
Yeah.
And we just defaulted to the lower rate instead of a higher rate, so it's not a bigger deal.
But at least we can say that we gave them the chance.
Right.
Well, now on top of that, if people are, you know, not everyone is coming to public meetings, but an opportunity to ask questions to seek clarity, that definitely helps de-escalate any potential misunderstanding of what the select board's trying to do.
So, those questions will come to Josh, if he has anything, you know, we, you're versatile, certainly get a chance, he can respond, but I don't expect we'll see that, but I'd be like to put them out in front of people before we move over.
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye, the aye to aye. Aye to be.
Alright.
Do we just send that to the guy at Pum and I and ask him to remake all those changes? Yeah, he can't help it, he just, yeah, just, we just, we just, we'll update the system.
And then we'll have to.
We'll have to update the town website.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay, alright, I hear you. I don't have anything, that's why. It all seemed reasonable.
Alright, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it.
One, thank you for coming in, two, thank you.
Uh, we have a COVID nineteen update. Do we have Board of Health? Jennifer, are you Greg, Greg?
Yep.
I don't know, I wanna say Gregory, but that doesn't feel right. Gregor, Gregor.
Greg Wa.
Greg Wa.
Greg Wa.
Greg Wa, you're wrong.
Jennifer, are you there? Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Jen, we'll come back to you, this is what I do to my kids. If I'm, if you're not there when I come back, I'm marking you as. Alright, um. Come back to that. Alright, review the draft host community agreement between the town and Pudding Hill Farm. Oh boy, this is a hot topic.
Alright, go easy on the business.
Okay, so we have, do we have anyone on call from? No.
No, um, I didn't tell them either, I think, you know, give you guys an opportunity to talk about, doesn't share your points without.
Okay, so we've got the host community agreement, which is built off the one that we've already approved with Bell Floor. Um, this one, however, so this is, I'll read you, I'll read aloud, it says our main revision is reducing the C I F to one percent, reducing the term of agreement to three years and deleting the charitable contribution. Please bear in mind this is a very small operation and will likely cause absolutely no impact on the town that could be reasonably related to the operation of the micro business on the business member's property. My clients are still willing to provide one percent as a community impact fee and I am open to hearing how a two hundred and fifty square foot grow in a barn on the business member's property might have an economic impact on the town, aside from those impacts articulated in the agreement that the business is already agreeing to pay permitting fees, consultants and the like. Shortening the term of the agreement will allow for quicker renegotiation in the event that something changes. Regarding the charitable contribution, my clients do not have investors or financiers and are not planning on making millions with this operation. They simply want the ability to grow and sell legally. So, this is a very different kind of applicant that may be Blanford and certainly KP Law are accustomed to. So that's from them, and then we've got a response from our attorneys.
Our attorney said.
And so our attorneys say. Josh, why can't I see the email that you wrote that had all this information?
Yep. I don't, it should be there, but if you want me to just throw it in there, what uh, Mark came back and said, he pretty much reiterated that the decision with respect to the amount of the community impact fee, the one percent of the fee and the duration uh, of the fee provision are really internal policy decisions to be made by the select board, so it's really entirely up to you. Uh, KP also argued that a longer term would um, maintain the determined fee provision for a longer period. So if you agree to the, um, uh, if, you know, they want to shorten the term, but if you maintain your three-year commitment on a one percent, then, um, you know, you're, 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 you're securing a much longer term on, on the agreed-upon impact fee that you negotiated. And the last thing he said was uh, the fee is intended to reasonably address local impacts. Um, I, and so, you know, if, if you think more or less that there's gonna be an impact uh, one way or another, you wanna make sure that you're able to uh, negotiate something that's um, uh, not only reasonable for them, but reasonable for the town as well.
So probably one of the most important impacts that both towns made a decision to recently was to move to a full-time police chief instead of a part-time police chief.
Right, but what, what uh, well, that's a, an impact. Right, but what, what uh, well, that's a, an impact, but what the attorney for um Putting Hills is saying is that because it's such a small operation, they're not really make anything. You know what I mean? Like, you know, three percent feels like too much, but they're willing to provide one percent.
So what about impact on our road?
They don't want to negotiate nothing. They want to negotiate something, but just something that's much more reasonable for their operation. Sorry, Kara, Madam Chair, go ahead.
Um, so what are we talking as far as like um vehicles in and out, like delivery vehicles, like road? You know, are we talking impact on our roads? What road is this on? It's on a gravel road. Okay, so I mean, that, there might be a, a bit of a large impact there. I mean.
I don't know. I mean, I don't, uh, according to the mission I sent you, there, there isn't going to be much of that going on because it's happening in, in such a square footage. They're pretty much doing it in their, you know, garage, I think. Um, I mean, don't mark me on that, but it's, it's such a small, it's nothing like what we're dealing with over at um Northland.
Ten by twenty-five.
Ten by twenty-five.
Oh, Eric and I were curious about like a business plan. So I mean, we have an idea with Bell Floor that they, their, you know, prospective uh into income, whatever, is going to be twenty-three, whatever they said, I think, millions, right? So could we see a business plan before we make a decision on what? I mean, because there, I want, so on one hand, I, I really want to encourage small business. I agree with that a hundred percent. And I want to be flexible and, and have them feel comfortable, you know, operating around a town. Um, I'm just curi-, I just want to see sort of what exactly they're coming from as far as what size business. And I feel like I could get a better idea if I had some sort of a, a scope of what they think that they'll bring in.
Obviously, a five hundred thousand square foot growing facility puts out more involved than a two hundred and fifty square foot facility. However, when these gentlemen came and asked for our host community agreement, they said that they were planning on installing a boutique special grow facility for small batch. So that's got to have a business plan other than I want to grow some weed for me and mine. And if you're going to be a small batch wholesaler, that means you're pre pricing once your small batching offsets your investment. And it's a business plan. So to come in, to, to ask for concessions upfront, to say, oh, for us, we're just a little small farm, you know, it's just, it's maybe one percent. It doesn't seem altruistic in that presentation, right? And so, I don't know. I, I'm just uh, I, I'm along with Kara. I want to see these gentlemen put their business in. I want to see them do their business dream. I want to do that. However, anything we agree to now, then becomes the footprint for the next facility that says, oh, we're just slightly bigger than those guys. Or, you know, we're slightly smaller than Bell Floor. Bell Floor is the standard, and they're paying one percent, or they're paying three percent of charities, and we should pay a little less than them.
Yeah.
I just don't like where that goes as a standard. It's going to be a matter of public, matter of public records to contract with the town.
So the standard would be three percent, which is why they said, we don't want to be three percent, why just?
Yeah.
So they want, they want to negotiate a, a shorter term in case anything does change, uh, of which you have to revisit and renegotiate a different, a, a much higher percentage. That's one. But also number two, I think they want to take out the charitable contribution. I found that mistaken. Uh, Kara, did you read that in the communication?
Yeah. It's, yes.
It's a boutique, so it's got to be a boutique.
It's a business. It's just a small, it's, it's on a much smaller scale than the other host community agreement that we've done. So they're looking to adjust.
My point is, it's a business.
Yes.
So our business tax is set at a certain rate while it's all the same.
It's all the same. So this isn't a tax. This is the, this is in the host community agreement specific to the marijuana industry. And the host community agreement that we've already agreed on with Bell Floor was at three percent.
Was, yeah, three percent in a, in a terrible.
And this is going to take place on Gibbs Road?
I think so.
Is this Gibbs Road, yeah?
Yeah. That must be the Fontaine Farm.
It, it's just a small, I mean, it's, it's like a barn that they're looking.
My point being is, is that, you know, we're going to start small and for first two years, we're going to be ten by twenty-five. But now we're going to add five.
So that's why the agreement would only be three years, so we could revisit it and we could.
They want to shorten it shorter than three years, I think.
No, it said shorten two, three years.
Oh, shorten two, three years, okay.
Yeah, so that way, T J, we would revisit, and if it was a, you know, expanding business at that point, we could say, all right, we're going to go up, up percent.
And my challenge mentally is you're going into business, and this is the, you know, the price is the price of being in business, right? You want to be in business, you're in business. The, and if you're saying upfront that you're not going to make money, be able to pay the town three percent of nothing is, you know, three percent of nothing is now zero. And three percent of a dollar is three cents. So it, it's.
Well, I, I think they're just like any small business looking to be sustainable and, and looking at where they can cut costs. I mean, I wouldn't be, I, I would go, I could go back with two percent, and we could go back and say, listen, you can forget the community contribution because in reality, it's a couple thousand dollars. It's not that big a deal. We'll go to two percent and we'll do the, the three year, or we could even do like a, a two-year amendment. Why is my child calling me?
Have, have they presented a, a business plan to the town yet?
That's, no, we haven't seen a business plan.
Because, you know, working with the Maryland County Planning Commission, the plan is considered hazmat, so, you know, now they're growing it outside, they're going to have exposure.
No, it's an indoor facility.
No, they still, so not, we don't have to worry about any of those things because that's all restricted by the state. They're going to have to go through our planning and our zoning and everything and meet all of those requirements. So those things are all taken care of.
In a way, we're putting the cart before the horse then.
We're good.
Yeah.
We're going to give them a uh, kind of a tack, but we don't.
Hey Jen, your mic's on. So the, yeah, I mean, this is pre-planning of, I want a cheaper rate because I don't know what my business is going to go yet.
But I'm not, but on the other hand, why not, I mean, as a town, we can give a small business a chance. We could negotiate and say, okay, we understand you're a small business. We're willing to be flexible here. Let's go to a two-year agreement, a two percent, and let's re, let's revisit in two years and see how you're doing. And if you, and at that point, if we feel that we need to increase the percent.
Well, I, I agree with you on that because you're splitting the difference of, they're going from three, they want one, you settle for two.
Yeah. And they're probably expecting us to negotiate. They're not, you know, I'm sure they're not thinking that we're going to be like, great, okay, one percent.
Or the term of the contract is uh, one point five percent for three years, and if the three-year market takes it to three percent, and the contract is for the normal duration of however long our contract is, five or ten years.
Well, I think we revisit. I don't think there's anything wrong with revisiting.
Well, why would, why would we revisit?
To see, I mean, if they're floundering and they're, they can show us their business model and it's not, they're not taking in a ton, then as a small business, we keep it at two percent.
Define floundering.
If they're, if they're just.
In an agricultural operation, define floundering because.
Excuse me. Marijuana is not agriculture.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
It's one of the earliest crops.
It is a manufactured business because they, if it's in, in grown, in, in a building. All right, they have to have a crop rotation. They can't just like plant corn, collect it and sell it, and then you're out of business until the next spring. This is a rotating business, so it's not agriculture.
Okay, this is manufacturing. But like agriculture, they do get to declare everything that they invest into growing the product as a tax deduction.
So, all right, let's get back to the topic. Do we want to wait? And we don't have, we are not agreeing on a host community agreement right now. My question is, do we want to go back to them with a different amount with some, with some differences to the contract, or do we want to wait and discuss this further with Tom? So nice when the heat goes off.
Yeah.
It's that crazy machine in the corner that's making a ton of noise. I don't even know what it's for.
I'm just. I think T J said it best, that it's cart before the horse. We're asking for concessions, and we haven't seen the business plan that shows me what their business plan is and what they're anticipating. What is, what is your anticipated revenue from this?
So then let's, let's make that our next step.
If your anticipated revenue is, and you can make that whatever you want, but it has to be reasonable based on the research of what is the output of a two hundred and fifty square foot grow facility?
Yeah. So then let's make that our next question. Does that sound reasonable, Josh, if we want to, you know, if we want to tell them that we're on, we're taking a look at our, the host community agreement and trying to make some decisions, but would like to have an idea of their business model?
Yeah, but I, I can ask and see if they have something written up. I know they might just come back and say, because it's so small, it's a micro level, that apparently they're not even trying to make money.
They have to know what is the output of a two hundred and fifty square foot grow facility. They're going to know that answer.
But to your point though, I mean, yeah, I absolutely did the same thing when it came with this, front of the select board. They shared some sort of um plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
That they're trying to accomplish.
So that's a reasonable request, I think.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Meanwhile, I'll go ask.
Two hundred square foot, P P L, for a year.
Keep you happy. All right, um, we're going to go next to Jennifer, are you here with us for the COVID?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. Okay, um, I've got a bunch of updates. Uh, the Massachusetts has a vaccine scheduling resource line. Um, for those that are seventy-five and older and aren't, or are unable to uh use or have difficulty accessing the internet, um, if you call two-one-one, they'll schedule um vaccines um for them. Uh, they're open Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to five. I posted all of this on our website. Um, and it's only for um, for scheduling appointments. They don't answer questions or anything like that. They're strictly answering, just for appointments. Um, let's see, order number sixty-two, we know the recalcitrant capacity for businesses. Close contact is now five people per thousand square feet. Restaurants have a ninety-minute cap on seating. Um, order number fifty-seven, they rescinded and is, um, you can no longer close at nine-thirty. It's like eleven or whatever your original time was. Um, so that's no longer in effect. Um, and the gatherings still remain so at ten, and outdoor gatherings remain at twenty-five.
Okay.
So, uh, now on our vaccine clinic, our update on that. Give me one second, change. Um, screens here, so we're on a roll with that. We're doing pretty good, better than I had thought. We're still, um, we're still looking to have the vaccine up and running um for the end of February. Um, let's see, we've put all our paperwork in and we should have an answer in about five days, I was told today.
Oh, wow.
I know. So I, I don't see a problem with it. We've got all our signatures from Bay State and everybody that's supposed to sign has signed. Um, so let's see, we ordered our freezer in our refrigeration unit, so that'll be arriving. Uh, Tom approached us and he said he's got Highway who's going to let us use their generator. Should we lose electricity, we have to make sure that, you know, this freezer stays at
Okay.
and the vaccine is at a certain, um, which is good because we know, um, that was our biggest hiccup with, with the generator. So we really uh, do appreciate that. Um, let's see, so this unit does have an alarm system to it, and it'll be monitored to our cell phone. So we'll know the minute that something happens. Um, let's see, oh, and I attended a seminar or a webinar on FEMA, um, and we started some process on that. And our, we're going to estimate a request of twenty-two thousand eight ninety-six um, from that, uh, for the vaccine. And this is just for the.
What's the number?
Twenty-two.
Two thousand twenty. Doses?
Twenty-two thousand two ninety-six.
Were dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we're, that's an estimated request.
My question, Jen, is that doses or is that dollars?
That is dollars.
Okay.
We don't know the doses until we know how many people are signing up. So we have our people who sign up um for the vaccine. Then on a Wednesday, we call in and we say, you know, we've got two hundred people signed up. We need two hundred and twenty-five vaccines.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we um are asking the board to give us complete access to the kitchen. Um, that's where we'd like to store um the refrigeration in the unit because we're going to be working in the um gym.
Okay.
So that would make more sense. Um, so we do request that we have complete access to the kitchen and that it does stay off limits to other personnel and people.
Yeah, absolutely. No one's been using it anyway, so I don't think that would be a problem, but absolutely.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I didn't think anybody used it, but I just, we just have to throw that out there. We're trying to get everything in order. Um, and we'll probably be setting stuff up in the entrance way, which might be inconvenient for a little while. Um, but we'll do our best to work around with uh Joanne and Josh and, and everybody. Um, so we're not in their way. Um, and that's really it. Do you have some questions?
I don't think so. Did you say the number to call for people is that is just um, two-one-one? Okay. I heard that this morning. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and, and I, again, I did put that out in the website. Go ahead.
So the twenty-two thousand, that's coming from FEMA? Is that coming from the state of Mass or is that coming from us? Where's that coming from?
No, that's not coming from you. That's coming, um, Josh, am I correct to say that's coming from um the state? It's a federal?
Yeah, yeah, so FEMA, right, so um, uh, any cost associated with vaccination um is going to be FEMA-related reimbursements.
Federal, right. That's not the state, though. It's federal.
Right, well, M E M A, M E M A court, so M E M A is, it's just administers what comes from FEMA, um, I believe. But uh, yeah, it'd be um federal funds.
So Ja, um, Eric is asking, do we have to front the money and get reimbursed?
What we do is we, um, right, so what we do is what we, is that we establish a line item um and deficit spend, and we submit reimbursement later.
Okay. That's fine with me. I think it's important enough that we do that.
So we are in. So we are not recouping any costs for this. I'm, and I'm not, I'm just being clear. It's not on for or against. So the town is not recouping any costs for doing a vaccination clinic in the town.
We're not spending anything either, though.
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
We're not making any money, no.
No, I, that's, no, we are not recouping costs, so we aren't charging anybody that comes to the door. Is that correct?
We do, but it goes to their insurance. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. It would go through their insurance. Yes, we're not collecting anything. It would go through their insurance. However, we do have the option not to charge.
And.
I know.
That's what I was going to do because if we claim to, against the insurance company, who is getting paid? Which i- it's, it's anecdotal, but the question is, if there's a claim against the insurance, the money has to go somewhere and it's not coming. Which i- it's it's anecdotal, but the question is, if there's a claim against the insurance, the money has to go somewhere and it's not coming to us.
It's gonna go back, it would go back to the state, I guess.
And or we can provide the clinic for free, which is what I would prefer. If we're going to vaccinate residents of the town of Blanford under this, I would just prefer that we pay for. As a town.
Okay, so, all right, there are numerous costs with this, um, so, and you know. I'm digging into all of that, but we have to keep in mind that we're paying our EMTs and our nurses, supplies and materials. Um, of course, we don't pay for the vaccine. Um, and I'm not sure if there is an amount that the state takes. For. I mean, they've gotta consume their costs somehow, so I'm not sure if the it has to go through the insurance, but I can certainly ask that question on um. Tomorrow afternoon, Tuesday.
That's that's sort of a weedy question. I'm gonna take my mask off. That's sort of the weedy question here, because if it's, uh, you know, there's a twenty two thousand dollar reimbursable is what I'm hearing upfront. Um, okay, I'm fine with that. We we can cover that as a town. Um, if it's double that, forty thousand dollars to vaccinate everybody to pay for the EMTs and the nurses or whoever, okay, I'm still good with that. The the question is. I don't want the process to get bogged down in the whole insurance claim, feedback, handling people's stuff coming through. Okay, because the town's not gonna see any of that money ever. Right, that's gonna go back to the state, that's gonna go back to the people who sent the EMTs that we paid for. So, so I just.
Not just Blanford residents. I mean, it doesn't have to be just Blanford residents. So.
We can actually.
When I signed up, when I signed up for this, Kara, I did just say it was gonna be Blanford residents.
Okay.
We would have to hook into another town if they were willing and then I could say, okay, you know, we're gonna do, you know, Blanford and whomever.
Okay.
And then because we had to give them an estimate of um, people on one of the forms, it was like how many people in town. You know, how many people seventy five and older and, you know, there was a whole breakdown, so.
I mean, I, you know, the question about where who gets paid when we bill insurance, but I don't really care.
Well, the insurance part is automatic.
No, but why would we wanna, and I don't mind covering it to the town, but if if it's gonna be free to the resident and covered by their insurance.
For those that have insurance.
Why would we, so how about we just build them insurance if there's an insurance and then not bill if there's no, if there's no insurance? I mean, why would we say?
It's it's it changes, it's marketing, right? If we want to say, look, Blanford residents come uptown and get vaccinated for free, that's free. But when I come up to town and you say, oh, you're Blanford resident, do you have your insurance card? Boy, it's not free anymore.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to market. People want to get, people want to get vaccinated anyways. I don't, I'm not really worried about marketing, but I think just the fact that we're holding a vaccine center is. People are thrilled with, so whether we're we're billing insurance or not, I don't think is really gonna be an issue.
I would just like, well.
I just feel like it's a non-issue. Like, if you don't have insurance, then it's free. If you have insurance.
The paper process coming in the ring, but we don't, that, trying to make. Just walk in the door, show me your ID, let's vaccinate.
So that's up to Jennifer. Is that gonna be difficult for you, Jennifer?
So the, it goes through the um, prep mod. So when um, a resident schedules their appointment, they're gonna be asked all of this information. And what we're gonna end up doing is running these reports on them. When they come through that door, of course, we're gonna have to see an ID to make sure it is the person. Um, and the address matches, you know, who that person is. Um. And then um, I don't think we're gonna take their insurance information again a second time.
So it's taken when they register initially?
It's it's taken when it they're they're registered and that's the automatic a prep mod. Um, program that they do it automatically and I don't know because I haven't gotten into it to see. If I put my name in there to see if it's, if I can bypass that without putting insurance and just or just click the button that says no insurance. Which if us as a town decide, no, we don't want to charge anybody, which I know we have spoke about. Then maybe we can set it up and tell the residents, hey, don't, you know, put in your insurance information. But I don't think that's something that we're gonna be able to control on prep mod.
Okay. As long as we're looking at it, that's okay.
All right, do you have?
I could. Question.
Oh, go ahead.
What?
You said you had a question, Jennifer?
No, I said I can ask that question. I can ask tomorrow, um, you know, what if we do this, you know, to the entire community for free? I, you know, I mean, I can ask that. I haven't asked that one yet, so.
No, because a lot of those are kids. It's not available to kids.
I mean, but I mean, our total resident count's twelve hundred, so.
So you're looking at like six hundred tops?
You're looking, yeah. If they sent us. Like a lot of us, like I'm getting my shot Monday through hunt and health, so, you know, uh, a lot of residents already got their shots.
Yeah.
Because we are an elder-based community.
Like TJ. But Joy, um, Jennifer, do you have anything else for us for COVID stuff?
Nope, I think that's.
Think that's not the truth. Thank you, and okay, good. Wait, before you leave, Jennifer, just because you got vaccine does not mean that you can no longer wear a mask. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we're still doing, we're still social distancing because we're not at a hundred percent effective yet and we're still protecting everyone. You're welcome, dear.
That is correct.
Thank you for clarifying. I just needed you to tell Eric that. No, I can't handle it. All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right, next up, we've got master planning process on update. Jen, uh, Joanna, are you giving us update? Josh, who's, what's the plan, Stan?
Hey, Joanna wants to provide an update, then great. The only real update is just to let you know that on February second, we had our um, our first uh. Uh, visioning workshop with residents. I think there were about, Joanna, mark me if I'm wrong, maybe twenty to thirty Blanford residents that participated.
At one point, there were thirty six people.
Wow, that's huge.
Well, that, you know, that number also includes, you know, the consultants and so forth, so. About twenty plus residents, if you eliminate the consultants and myself.
Was there active input?
There was, so what happened was um, uh, there was a competing interest. The historical society was having their annual meeting event too that was virtual. And some folks left to to go over there. It started at seven, the virtual session started at six. Uh, but ultimately, we were broken out into um. Uh, well, first, we went over previous plans um, that have been completed in the past and we've looked at um. Different identify strategic objectives in those in those plans and there was polls taken as to whether or not folks thought. We should continue, keep that as a a a goal or or kind of order of priority of our, you know, what we thought about the specific objective. Um, then we were broken out into two um, subgroups um, with uh, group facilitators um, to uh. You know, get additional feedback on things like Blanford strengths, area weaknesses, things that um. Potential gaps or that are missing to kind of continue to leverage additional um. Uh, additional feedback from in in much smaller focus groups. Um, so because there were just, you know, a handful, like twenty residents or so, we were able to just do two focus groups rather than, you know, more than two. Uh, but other than that, I thought it was, uh, I thought it went very well. It's just, it's it's the first one, there there's. Multiple um, categories or sections that are gonna be in this plan. And each section is gonna have their own community engagement process. Uh, from, you know, like, like you're aware, right, there's an economic development section, a transportation section, um, there's the open space and recreation. Um, part of the uh, planning process here. And they're gonna have, you know, kind of their own engagement um, activities happening within those particular sub-sections. And we also have the community-wide survey that's out there that's due February fifteen. As an additional tool for us to leverage more information from the public, which I'm gonna put in the comment section here for anyone that's watching from home and. Can certainly uh, click and complete the survey online off the one, but Eric, I think you're raising your hand, right? Think you wanted to say something?
No.
He's checking his nails.
Oh, sorry, it's just it's small right there, so I couldn't tell if whether or not, but that's that's where we are currently. That's the name of the game here. Um, is to try to solicit as much feedback as possible so we can make sure that it's a. Community-driven um, vision plan, so.
Yeah, that's what was, but my next question, how's the survey? I've got mine right here. How's the survey completion?
I I I don't have an update on that yet.
Joanna?
All I can say is we have stacks of them. They have not been sorted yet.
Okay.
We were gonna start sorting and PVPC said they're gonna take care of that.
Oh, great, okay.
They were, they're coming in.
Oh, good. I was just gonna say, should we send out a reminder to people or you think we're good?
It's not just those stacks too. There's also, you know, those that are being completed online, so folks are able to mail in their tangible, you know, the physical copies. And then there's also a handful of folks that are completing the online version as well.
Um, I mean, it might not hurt to remind people.
Are we certifying the results to ensure that we don't have more submitted uh, planning documents than we have community residents?
Seriously. Um, okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you. That's a lot of work to get that together. I don't mean to make light of it, so thank you.
Yeah, you big jerk. All right. Um, Josh, before I go to new business, do you have any other unfinished business?
The only, I mean, we got a lot of unfinished business, but the only one I have to report back currently. Is actually not unfinished business, depending on how you look at it, maybe new business. Um, I met with uh, both Mick Brennan and and Dick Gates to discuss Shepherd Farm. Would that be an unfinished business or? Way, way unfinished category? Well, so we're we're scheduling and I was looking at my notes and we scheduled, so we want to schedule a a a meeting in front of the select board to go. To discuss this, um, and I had scheduled February twenty two, but just realized that that's special town meeting day.
Okay.
So we're looking at a Monday in March. Um, I just emailed them to letting them know and I'll reschedule that and let you know when it is, but basically. You know, we had, we had a great meeting um, overall as far as to, you know, what historical society, their intent. Um, uh, behind what they were hoping to accomplish. And then there's also Dick Gates, you know, from Conservation who had some ideas um, as well. And I think, you know, there are some options on the table and it's difficult to pursue any of those options without getting a solid direction. Uh, community consensus on what you guys want to do. So what we ultimately co- ultimately concluded was, you know, let's be prepared for an uh, an honest dialogue with the select board in a public meeting. To understand what these options are and. Whatever the consensus is, is gonna be the consensus and that way, you know, I'll know what direction I can ultimately go and spend time on. Um, so we're hoping to do that at a future select board meeting, some uh, some Monday in March, it looks like. And I just wanted to keep you guys uh, in the loop so you're aware.
Okay, that sounds great. I can't wait to talk about Shepherd.
Pract- pro- progress. Oh, can we go to old business real quick?
We are under unfinished business.
I would like to just uh, motion to enter Chief Modder's uh, one paragraph of his investigation into the site license for. The check right maintenance facility, just to add it in the record so that. As our hazmat authority that he investigated that concern and.
Okay, you want me to read it for the?
And it isn't a concern, but if you want to enter it into the record is, hey, we looked at it, checked it out.
So he said, so Chief Modder sent us a, an email on the twenty eighth of January. Um, it says, I spoke with the licensed site professional about the notice we received. This goes back to the leaking tanks discovered around nineteen ninety. Oh, boy. Um, they have removed the tanks and have continuously monitored the soil. At this time, they have determined does not pose a threat, but the area of contamination should not be disturbed. The law requires them to notify us that a restriction has been placed on the property. I see no cause for concern on the town. Thank you. Good call.
Other communication, Kara, in your packets, you'll see a memorandum uh, from the planning board. Um. They've received a special permit uh, site plan review application from Belle Fleur.
Okay.
Dates and times there for people that are watching from home and for your communication as well, the select board, uh, FYI in reference.
Okay, so the hearing is gonna be March twenty fifth at seven PM at Town Hall.
March third.
March, it says.
Planning board will be acting on this application. On March third.
Okay.
Seven PM, so that would be a public meeting that people can attend and then they're scheduling the hearings.
Yep.
Two opportunities, and they're gonna post that uh, Zoom or whatever for people to access?
Yeah, the meetings have been taking place, actually, the planning board has been actively meeting on, in your select board room there. We haven't been recording the meetings, but we'll get them the habit of starting to record meetings so that we can post them on our town YouTube channel.
Well, if they're asking people to attend the hearing, we need to via Zoom, right?
Yeah, it'll be electronically.
Okay. Um, I have a a new business. We have a request to turn the Watson Park lights on at night. So that people can go sledding. Um, so we do have. So I know that we we, there's an extension cord that runs to the trees in the park. I don't know if there's any lights, though. So she said there used to be a light attached to the Town Hall building that would shine on the skating rink. I know there was a light that shined.
Temporarily rigged hole on two by fours by Bill.
We don't, we don't have a a light up there anymore, do we?
No, it's, he rigged it, it was like a.
What was that, Josh?
It's like a spotlight or a floodlight.
Yeah, he just hung it up there and plugged it in.
Right, the extension cord that extended way up high and above where no one can reach to the town.
Um, do we, do we still not have electricity in the park?
No, of course not. You can't get the historic commission to allow us to run electricity since the parks never had electricity.
So God forbid in heaven. No, we could at this point put solar lights in the depot.
We could.
That would probably be the cheapest way to go. I mean, we could, I'm not opposed to look at putting solar lighting for sledding, but I don't know what that opens us up to for liability.
What, lights?
No, saying come sledding. Okay, I mean, there are big trees at the bottom. Just FYI, this weekend, we were at somewhere sledding accident. Someone wasn't ended up in the emergency room and she was the ninth sledding ER visit that day, so be careful.
Trees don't, trees don't move out of your way, just.
Yes, Joanna.
She referred to a light that was at the back of the building that used to shine.
So she's talking about Bill had rigged something up that like.
No, she talked about the tree, but she also said there there used to be a spotlight.
Like an ex, there's an exit light, there's an exit spotlight over the exit.
There's a spotlight that shines on the park. I don't think there's a spotlight that shines that way. I could be wrong.
And there's like a light that's back there that would illuminate the exit at night, but it's not like. It's perception, right? Does it extend all the way? No, because we actually had a light out there for the skating rink and that was the Bill special.
Are the, are the lights on timers? I mean, I never see this one on anymore. Is it on? Yeah, I mean, we could send this to to Hoppy and just ask him for some input on it. And then.
And and the light at the back of the building as well.
Yeah.
So you're saying the one in the tree is defunct, that's.
Yeah, that's just like.
That was a bill, you know, he would hang that up when they uh.
When we had the skating rink, at one point, we circled it with lights, I think. We did Christmas tree lights or something. Yeah, it would have been a good year. It's been cold. Okay. Yes.
As chair here, I know you've already discussed it, but I did get a text from our highway super. As chair here, I know you've already discussed it, but I did get a text from our highway super asking if he could just make a note to table item uh B as it relates to the COVID-nineteen leave policy.
Um, ta- table item, which one?
Uh, B, the COVID leave policy. You already made a decision to table, so I guess I'm just requesting if we can go by the order so that Rainy can make a comment about it. Just, it's up to you as a chair.
Yeah, but did we already table it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Um, so we have an executive session.
Karen, so is that, so Rainy wanted to make a note, if, if you allow him to, he's on the line.
Oh, 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 I thought he was asking us to table it.
No, no, to, to address the board, even though you discussed it, he just wanted to address the board and, and share.
Oh, hi, Rainy. Yes, go ahead, Rainy.
All right. Well, I just wanted to uh comment on that. Um, I understand uh both thought processes involved. However, I would just like to point out something. The people who are most likely to be susceptible to it day to day is your full-time employees that are out in the public all the time. Even if they take, even if they take all the precautions that I think they've been doing fantastic about it. I know we sanitize everything every day, but still, the issue runs into, they aren't mandated to tell us. Uh, there's nothing that says anybody who tests positive's gotta come in and tell you. Morally, they should, yes. But understanding that some people don't have uh the financial ability to lose a whole bunch of time or are concerned about using up all their benefit time. Um, I think we're kind of walking a tightrope there as to say that, well, if I keep my mouth shut and I'm not showing signs, I can just go to work. Um, therefore jeopardizing other people. Um, coming forward, right forward like that, uh, I do know it's an additional expense to the town, but I do know that if one person doesn't open their mouth and four or five people around them become contaminated, it's gonna be a bigger issue. Um, I would hope that the board looks at this as not as a uh, a benefit or anything, because nobody in their right mind goes out to get COVID. Um, but you can also get COVID, be a carrier, and not show signs or even be sick. So my concern is if we run into that situation and they don't have any kind of relief to back them up, they may decide not to lose their personal time or their vacation time, or if they've already used it, they may not be able to say, I can't afford to be without a week's pay or fourteen days' pay. Um, I just really wish that the board would look at that, and I wasn't unfortunately in the meeting at the time it was being discussed, or I would have voiced it up at that point. But I personally feel that tabling it, I understand because one, one member is not there, but this is actually kind of uh time-sensitive to certain issues now, but it could be very much an issue tomorrow or the day after. Well, none of us know if we're gonna turn up positive from one day to the next.
So we tabled, because we were gonna be a split vote, um, so it wasn't gonna go anywhere. That was our reason for tabling it until we had a third person here. Um, and we can vote on it?
No, I underst- I understood the reasoning for tabling it and, and, but just wanted to be able to, I don't know, as they say, put my two cents in. Um, to please have that deep, you know, taken into consideration very seriously, because I, I know in one way, you know, it's a situation that's being rectified right at the moment, but I'm more concerned about what happens next week or the week after.
Sure.
And I don't wanna see numerous people put in jeopardy because of somebody's financial circumstances.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense, Rainy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna vote on it now?
No.
No, I know, I just wanted, I just wanted to check and see if you wanted to change your mind vote. Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session, not to reconvene. Oh.
Oh, call Department of Expenditure.
Looks good.
Sorry.
I didn't see any anomalies.
Is there anything weird on it besides the usual?
No.
All right, we're good. Uh, to go into executive session to discuss, uh, to, I'm sorry, to reconvene in executive session from the recessed executive session meeting of January twenty-eighth in accordance with this stuff, GL thirty A, section twenty-one, to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
Not to re-.
Not to reconvene. Is there a second, or Kara says yes?
Yes. Good night, all.
See you later, alligator.
Fun, TJ.
All right.
Josh, you coming down to turn us off?
Yeah, yeah, um, except we're staying on because Rainy's here, but if you can, Joanna, can you just hit? In the back, I'll head over.
You what, Josh?
Just.
Hello? Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
You, you have to mute me. Uh, I can't hear unless it's requested by the individual.
So are you staying on, Rainy, or are you leaving?
I'll stay on, but I can't, I can't not listen or participate unless the individual requests it.
But Rainy, I can, I can just simply call you from my phone if, if need be, so we can just.
Very good.